Okay, good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Concord Planning Board on the evening of May 7th at 2024 at 7:02 PM. I will take a roll call of all members. Rob Almeida.
Here.
Andrew Boardman.
Here.
Sue Felshen.
Here, and I'll turn my video on in one click.
Okay, we'd love to see your face. And I'm Linda Miller, and I am here. Abby Flanagan should be joining us later, and Mark Giddings will not be here this evening. Our first order of business is to elect officers, and I would like to present a slate of officers this year. I would like to present Andrew Boardman as Chair, Mark Giddings as Vice Chair, and Rob Almeida as Clerk. And I will, I don't think I need to ask for discussion.
I'll second that. I don't know if that's necessary, but I think.
I think probably it is.
I think it is, yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion? If not, then we can take the roll call. Rob Almeida.
Yes.
Andrew Boardman.
Yes.
Sue Felshen.
Hi.
And myself, Linda Miller, yes. And I don't see if Abby has joined us yet.
No, not yet.
But with that, I thank everyone very much for the privilege of having been the Chair this year. It has been a wonderful experience, and Andrew, I hope you and your team have as equal a great challenge before you in moving the Planning Board forward and the great pleasure of working with Elizabeth to do that. So.
Thank you.
Take it away.
You're leaving some big shoes to fill. So with the election of officers, the next item I had on the agenda was potential Planning Board member who I asked to join us, which is great that I see her here. So I just wanted to give her the opportunity to introduce herself and see if she had any questions for the board or the board had any questions for her. You know.
Sure. I'm Pat Nelson, and I did submit a green card for this when I heard that there was going to be an opening on the Planning Board, and it's something that's been in the back of my mind for a while that I'd like to participate in the Planning Board. I've lived in Concord for 35 years, and I have been for the last 20 years, the Executive Director at Concord Children's Center. And in that capacity, I have participated in building a new school and had the opportunity to really see firsthand the young families that moved to Concord, the importance of Concord being a place for families to raise their children, and have had a particular passion for making sure that we continue to be a great place for families to raise their children. So that's one of the reasons behind wanting to participate in the Planning Board. I've also got a strong interest in seeing Concord develop based on what the current conditions are, what the needs are of our community, but also the state, what the needs are currently, not what they always have been. Balancing that with having guidelines and rules and ways of doing things so that we can can help those developments happen in a way that preserves what we all love about Concord. So that's another reason I'm interested in the Planning Board. Housing is a particular interest of mine, assuring that we have housing stock that is diverse enough to allow for all income levels and become a welcoming place for people to continue to move to. I've been on two school building committees, the Willard School, and I'm currently co-chair of the Concord Middle School Building Committee. So I've had the opportunity to see firsthand, as well as when we were doing the Children's Center at 250 Old Bedford, how committees work, how the departments work, how zoning works, how you get a project from vision to actualization, and what the challenges are and what the opportunities are for improvement, proving those things. So I think that's a perspective that I would bring to the Planning Board. And I think those are the the main things that I would share with you about why I'm interested in being on the Planning Board. I'm not an architect. I don't have a lot of government experience, but I do have a fair amount of experience with the town of Concord.
No, that's great. Thank you. I know in the past, we've looked for some people who've had experience being on the other side and invited several developers to come and join us if they were interested, but no one ever took us up on that, so maybe this is the next best thing. So, great.
I note that Abby has joined the meeting.
Hello. You missed the Officers' election, so I'm now the new head honcho. We didn't nominate you, though, in your absence, so don't worry.
I appreciate that. That was an opportunity missed, probably, but I appreciate that.
Yeah, committee by ambush is never a great idea. So with that, I'll let you go back to your evening if you don't want to stay in for the right now, or you can.
Are there any questions from Planning Board members, anything that you would like to know about me before you consider bringing me on to partake in your meetings with you?
Well, I thought that was a great introduction with a lot of background about things you've been involved in in Concord. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
I was gonna kind of say the same thing that Sue just said. I think, you know, it'd be great to have someone with your experience join us, and, you know, you've been in town longer than I have, you know, and so it's good to have someone who's been in the trenches.
I'll just mention that Pat omitted her term on the Finance Committee where.
How could I forget?
And how could you forget that? But so we know that you have a lot of experience with other committees in the town as well, and I think we'll very much enjoy having you serve on this committee in addition, so.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself, and I will depart now.
Yeah, I'll keep you posted.
Thank you, Andrew.
You're welcome to stay, Pat.
If you want to.
Well, don't you have to deliberate and make a decision?
You can stay not as a member. You could find out we're about to discuss our goals for the year and whatever else may be on our agenda, and it would give you an interruption, assuming the Select Board sees fit to appoint you.
Okay, then I will stay. Thank you very much.
Awesome. The next thing we had on the agenda was to open it up for public comment. As we did last year, we moved this up from the end of the meeting so that if people were passionate, they didn't feel like they had to wait around until we had deliberated everything else. So with that, we'll generally limit public comment to 15 minutes with no more than three minutes allocated to any one speaker. General public comment is limited to items that are not on tonight's agenda, so I don't know if anyone in the public has any comments. Seeing none, I will move on to the next agenda item, which is the Envision Concord Update Discussion, which includes items which were highlighted in the agenda. So I don't know if you want to bring them up. Is that the best way to?
I will share my screen, and the board can click. There you go. The biggest task for the board was the first time you did this, so it is not such an arduous task to go through and to update this. So just running through, it's a very colorful chart, but basically, you know, green is what you're potentially going to work on in, you know, this next fiscal year. Red would be out the year or two, and then, you know, three to five over six. And then special attention to the dark blue ones, which you just completed. So I'm highlighting those. Again, with the site plan rules and regs, you are moving forward with the MBTA Site Plan Rules and Regs, and then I think following that, it is possible that we may be able to take those and then more easily formulate those into full site plan rules and regs for all districts and and all projects. So, you know, that's the goal. And for subdivision rules and regs, wait, you'll see, as you saw in the Goals Memo, waiting to see if that amendment in one of the legislation bills to the procurement requirements where moving the requirement for an RFP from $50,000 up to $100,000. So we'll pull together, get the RFP ready. The board will review that RFP. And then if that legislation amendment goes through, then we can just take the scope of work that's in the RFP and send it out for requests for quotes instead and not have to go through advertising in the central register. And it's a much more complicated process for an RFP request for proposals instead of requests for quotes. It's gonna, it's gonna take me, I will do my best, Pat. You know, should you be nominated and appointed by the Select Board, the first few times around, I will try not to use acronyms or abbreviations, but it'll take me, it'll take me a couple of times. Big goal, completing MBTA communities. I will provide a quick update. So we are waiting for the state's letter from our pre-compliance review. I'm hopeful to get that in the next, I don't know the exact 90 days from when we filed. I'll have to receive the date we filed, but so, but am expecting that within, you know, the next week or so, and then we'll, you know, figure out if there are certain things that may need to be tweaked. At the same time, again, there's the legislation that that's going through review right now, where amendments have been made to the Governor's Bill, extending the timeframe for communities. So for commuter rail community compliance requirement is being pushed to December 31st, 2025. So if there is something that needs to be tweaked in the zoning that we just adopted, we don't have to scramble and try and get a fall town meeting scheduled to make that happen. It can happen again for spring, annual town meeting next year. We'll see, you know, it depends on, you know, what it is that needs to be tweaked and whether there is other things for a fall town meeting. I don't know. It's what most people don't know is there's a significant expense to each night we have town meeting, so we'll move in, we'll look at that, and then the next item, adding completing, passing the two-family and residence B by special permit, so that you know, again, celebrate, celebrate the successes. And then for this item, we have in progress the MBTA Community Site Plan Rules and Regs. And we'll, you know, this item for the regular site plan rules and regs, you know, that may be, you know, within the year. Not sure yet. We will be moving forward with the amendments to the tree bylaw rules and regs. And again, a lot of these completed items are based on warrant articles that were just passed, so again, amending the floodplain bylaw. I will let the board know that back in FEMA did do a more detailed study of the watershed out Virginia Road, and which is part of the Charles River watershed. And they did amend the floodplain. We provided comments. And also, the first preliminary maps that came out were, they had errors on them that we pointed out. It has taken since then to, I think like three weeks ago, for them to finally address all of the errors, do additional study that was needed, and reply back to our comments. So there is a revised 100-year floodplain map for that specific area and a flood insurance study that will have to be adopted for annual town meeting next year. So they just keep updating things, which is, which is better because it was based off a much more detailed study, which I think will be a benefit for a few property owners out that direction. And again, residents, two-family and residency by special permit. The adoption of the scenic road bylaw rules and regulations. In progress is the next phase that the board will be going through with analyzing the zoning bylaw parking requirements. That's it for now.
Awesome. I didn't have any particular questions. Was there anyone else who saw something that they thought should be updated or could be done? I mean, it's a detailed thing, so I don't know if there's any specific comments, but I thought I'd open it up.
Well, I, as usual, did things at the last minute and at great expense and emailed Elizabeth only at 6 o'clock tonight. I had a few comments, but it was nothing really major about the the chart. Well, there were a few things, I went through the long-range plan, and there were a few things that I found in the long-range plan that I didn't see in the action items chart, but it may just be that I overlooked them. And I note that we take credit for having completed things in more than one location, if they belong in more than one location. And I thought that the two-family article that just passed could be added in another box, but that's not, again, very important. I think really my comments should probably be taken off, taken up offline by Elizabeth or considered under goals when we get to that. I can, I can, I did not look at my email before this meeting, so. Honestly, I emailed you an hour before the meeting. It's ridiculous. I'm ridiculous. I'm sorry about that. So I don't know, Andrew, what I can do is I can touch base with Sue before the next meeting, and based on your goals discussion, you know, this chart may be amended as well, and then what we can do is at the next meeting, bring back both as a final document for the board to accept.
That sounds good, because then that'll also have us adjusted priorities and whatnot listed on the chart as well, so that's good. Makes sense to me. Awesome. Thank you, Sue. So I guess with that, we'll move on to the draft 2023-2024 goals, which Elizabeth did provide, and hopefully everyone had a chance to look at.
So this, as every year, it's kind of getting a little easier. Just taking your goals from last year and going through and providing an update and congratulating the board. Hate to keep calling out Linda, but I gotta call Linda out. It was truly just an amazing challenge, and when I, when I look at that chart of, you know, all those meetings, it's pretty spectacular. So Item 1 is, did pass, and that's, that's a huge hurdle and a win for the community. Working on Item 2, which is something on your goals every year. And I'm not sure there's any other board and committee that goes to this level every year. So again, the planning board should be very, you know, very proud of that. Passage of the scenic roads bylaw rules and regulations that thought it was going to be simple, and that turned it out to be a little bit more challenging, but I think, you know, the board created a really great document. And subdivision rules and regs update. So again, as I said, just getting that, basically, the scope of work defined, the board, you know, have the board review that, have that teed up to be ready to go, depending on which way we need to go. So and then have a list of changes that have as element here. Will Holden is the land manager in Natural Resources, and he is the town's reviewing agent. And has a list of, you know, tweaks and changes. I think what I'm gonna do is prepare that in a memo form for the board to discuss, invite Will to come to a meeting if the board has questions. And and so just, you know, start to move that project, that project forward. And then just the update on the items that got passed for this town meeting. I know Heather has already started with all of the edits of the zoning bylaw and getting that keyed up to be be fixed, and then we'll go out to, we'll go out to print once we hear back from the Attorney General on the warrant articles. And now we get to your, your goals for the next year. So number one is definitely going to be the site plan rules and regs for MBTA communities. Your Envision Concord Update. The subdivision rules and regs update, the tree preservation bylaw update. We have the whole parking conversation, which I did talk with Mark again this morning before he left. And do have some transportation funds in the planning budget. So had a conversation with Sam Gregorio at TEC. He's going to put together, basically, you know, a scope of work, taking all the technical memos that he did and the information that he provided, and the, the next step with working with the board on actually developing amendments to the shared joint parking. I think as the board saw with the redevelopment of Proparazzi, you know, there definitely is room for improvement. Also, implementing in the, which is currently not there, our transportation demand management measures, and especially when it's related to people requesting relief from parking. And then the third aspect that he provided in his memo dealt with the option for payment in lieu when people are requesting relief from parking. I don't see that advancing to the point of being a bylaw amendment because it, it will require conversation by the Select Board, possibly FinCon, Public Works. It's generally when, as the board knows, when people are looking at requesting relief from parking, they may be going on the assumption that there's available on-street public parking or adjacent public parking lots, or, so I think that just needs to be a much larger conversation, but he will at least be able to provide the board that core information about how to structure some type of bylaw, or it may be, it may be a regulation. I'm not sure. And then the last, Item 6, is what are, what's on deck for annual town meeting 2025? On the list that carried over from this year that the board previously talked about was changing the application time limit, which currently in the zoning bylaw, that application time limit is based on the day the application is submitted and not the close of the public hearing, which is what is the same for special permit. And then the board discussed in the industrial zone, zoning districts, accessory retail use for, you know, any manufacturing. So the example, you might have a brewery, and you want to have a brew pub, which in some of the districts, you can have manufacturing and a restaurant, but they couldn't have a retail component, so they couldn't sell, you know, mugs and t-shirts and, you know, they can only sell the items that are manufactured on the site. So that's, I believe, a, you know, a conversation that the Economic Vitality Committee is is having, you know, will have over the next couple of months. And we'll come, you know, come back to the board, so I just putting that on the board's radar. And then what happens next with the parking requirements? And Sam is going to provide that memo before the next meeting. So when the board moves forward to finalize this memo or to submit to the Select Board, and you'll have that information on the direction to go. As I'm thinking about that, so May, end of May, the memo may, you know, whether the board wants to wait for Mark to get back, which would be the first meeting in June, which is still within that, the timeframe that the board reviews, you know, their goals and projects and sends a letter to the Select Board. So that's something that the board may want to think about at the next meeting. There are a couple of changes to the additional dwelling unit bylaw that are bubbling up through the Board of Appeals process. So I will, I will know more about that Thursday night after the Board of Appeals meeting, but I just wanted to put that on the board's radar. One item deals with whether there needs to be clarification that the square footage for the ADU does include the basement. Under maximum floor area ratio, when you were talking about bulk and scale above ground, basements are excluded. But I know when the board went in 2020 and amended the bylaw, you know, that square footage for an ADU was to keep it small, 750 square feet by right, up to 1,000 by special permit to provide these small units diversity, not have it be, you know, have it be accessory to the single-family dwelling. And I think there may be clarification needed that it's not 1,000 square foot above ground and 1,000 square feet in the basement. Above ground and a thousand square feet in the basement. Um. So, um, that, that will be ironed out. You know, starting Thursday night, uh, but there is a memo from town council, um, that will be, uh. Finalized before the board's, uh, meeting. In two weeks, so that will help, um, inform the board as well as, um, some of the amendments, clarifications that need to happen. And then the last thing on my list was the combined business residence, uh, zoning. And the, the board had talked about as part of the MBTA communities in the beginning, looking at that. But, um, deciding not to move forward with that. But, um, having interest in, um, going forward with amending, um, you know, the current bylaw, which is. Um, which is not, you know, it, it's not usable. It's not, um, it's not doable. Uh, and, um. So the one aspect with that is, uh, we were successful in getting the grant through the community one-stop program. If everybody remembers, it's for twenty-five thousand dollars to do the economic feasibility study. By the time that happened, um. The first community who did it, the consultant charged twenty-five thousand and that's why the state provided us those funds. Um, by the time the consultants, more consultants were doing it, um, the price went down, uh, cost fifteen thousand. So I have received approval from Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And the Department of Revenue on, um, utilizing the ten thousand dollars. Um, to have a consultant assist the board in, um, amending the combined. Business Residence Zoning District, which, um, I'm hoping we can rename to Mixed Use. Um, it's just easier to say. Um, and that consultant can help the board amend the, the, um, the zoning. Um, and look at, um, potential amendments that, uh. Would, as it relates to the mixed use requirements for the MBTA communities. Um, and whether that's something that the, um, the board wishes to move forward with. And utilize those grant funds. Now, future list of projects, there's always the floor area ratio by law. Which, I know there was, um, a, a previous planning board member, you know, spoke at. Town meeting, um, when Andrew was doing the presentation for the Two Family and Residence B. And the, the, the board spent quite a bit of time a couple of years ago trying to figure out a way to tweak that bylaw. Um, to make it work. My, um. My concern is, um, I do think the maximum floor area ratio works for Residence C. There, there're smaller lots and people can envision a ten thousand square foot lot and they can see. You know, a twenty-three hundred square foot home and how that proportionally fits. Um, you, you could easily take that formula with that same proportion, you know, ratio. And, and. And just say, okay, so ten thousand square foot lot, twenty-three hundred square foot home. Twenty thousand square foot lot, you know, forty-three thousand square foot home. And, and you, you could, you can easily do that calculation to figure out what that is. Um, my, you know, my concern is always for the, for the board is. Um, moving forward with zoning bylaw amendments, um, that actually have. Uh, the ability to pass. And I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if. You know, you had an eighty thousand square foot home. I mean, uh, eighty thousand square foot lot in the Residence Double A District. Um, you know, telling, you know, that person, you know, we're going to limit your house to six thousand square feet. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that's, you know, quite would pass.
So I, I, I'll also add some commentary for people who weren't on the board. So when I started, this was, like, I came in, like, and they were. Six months into the discussion about this and, and it got as far as we're having this discussion now. It, it fizzled in part because. Uh, as, as Elizabeth mentioned, the far is very good at small lots and becomes extremely ineffective at larger lots. And where you're trying to, you have the competing goals of limiting mansionization in the sense of looming large houses. All on top of each other versus just trying to fight very big houses. And you, you sort of lose the plot a little bit, uh, when it comes to trying to fight very big houses. For something that's designed to regulate building mass and, and like shadows and, and things like that. So it just sort of. It becomes a less effective tool and it's always good for us to discuss, I think, but it's not. It, it's a lot of work to even come up with scenarios for how to change it. And even then. It usually doesn't accomplish what we're looking, what, what the, the stated goal is, which is. Fighting the nationization or trying to regulate it in some way, but, um, so. Just, just a little bit more color along the same lines.
Well, when I was looking over the long range plans, the notes I took on it earlier, um. Looking at the action items, there was one thing in the long range plan, which I couldn't find in the action items chart, and I may just have overlooked it. It was an idea on one hundred, page one hundred and twenty-three of the long range plan, item one. Which, um, uh, referred to a couple of possible ways to control large house. Construction that were not an F A R. One of them was to require a special permit. For a house that's bigger than some size. Or some size in some district or some size with relation to its lot. And another one, I've forgotten what the other one was. I think it was to tax super large construction. But I would have to go check again. Um. So. It's things we could consider. I don't know if these would work, as Elizabeth says, things have to be able to pass town meeting. But having it be hard as opposed to impossible. Or expensive as opposed to impossible might be easier to pass through town meeting. Than at the absolute ban of the F A R. Well, you can always go for a variance, but it's not easy to get a variance.
Yeah, I, I, I don't. I don't know, is a symbolism. So, uh, I'm, I'm pulling it up now, but obviously it's huge. So it's taking a while to load.
Oh, yeah. Yes. And, you know, I wasn't suggesting that we discuss it right now, just that maybe we should make a note of that. Um, in, uh, this item on our future list of projects. To not just consider tweaking the F A R, but to consider other alternatives. That might or might not be more workable.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take a look at, um, look at that, Sue, and I can, um. I can add this, some. Somebody's being needy tonight, huh?
Yes, this is Georgie, everyone. I hope everyone enjoys Georgie just popping into our meetings, but she is, she is, she's not. She's not resting quietly like her brother under the desk, so I apologize.
As long as she puts in her green card for the planning board.
Yeah. Um, so I will take a look at that and I will add this, um, add, you know, what's in there to this for. Um, the board to have a further discussion at your next meeting. But are there any? Anything on this list? Um, I am gonna, um, touch base again with the building commissioner. Um, oh, the other item he flagged for additional dwelling units is in the zoning bylaw. Um, it does allow the Board of Appeals to issue a special permit, um, for, um. An A D U on non-conforming, legal non-conforming lots based on area. Um, but it. Uh, does not have legal non-conforming lots based on frontage. So there's a lot of legal non-conforming lots that don't have the required frontage, have more than the required area. Um, and, uh, so that is, uh, that is one item he is recommending that, uh, be. Um, be provided in an amendment.
Well, yes, I did have some thoughts about other goals or expanded goals. So for A D Us, there's also the question of, um, if we would wanna. Expand the size of A D Us by right in Residence C as a next step. Or, um, if we would want to see about allowing A D Us. Along with a duplex in Residence C. I don't imagine that would apply to a lot of lots because of F A R, but not every lot is the minimum size. So it might be a possibility. Uh, let's see, um. Then another alternative would be to allow two families by right in Residence C. As a next step because special permits are very difficult and onerous to get through the process of. Or alternatively to, um, try to allow them by right only in the MBTA. Overlay. Districts because, um, uh, we've just allowed multifamily there by right after all and, um. Obviously, since we support ha- um, housing, we would prefer multifamily housing. But nobody has to ever build any multifamily housing ever. It's their property. They own it. They can do what they feel like with it. And if there are some owners who would be willing to put up a two-family but not a multifamily, well, that would in. Prove our, uh, housing options over a single family. So there is another thought. Um. Speaking of. The paparazzi application which came up in the past year, that got me thinking about our, um. Zoning dimensions for some of our commercial, commercial districts. In the district that, that proposal fell, uh, the height limit was two stories. And so they weren't allowed to put up a three-story building, which seemed particularly unnecessarily restrictive. Right next to Route Two where a, a third story was not going to be harming any nearby people. Plus you can already build a three-story single family house. What would be so terrible? I think we should consider making sure that every commercial district has a, um, maximum height that's at least. Thirty-five feet. Uh, and also I have noticed for years that we have of, um. Some industrial park zoning, which has some really huge setbacks. And those huge setbacks don't seem at all necessary when they are not funding on residential districts. It just seems to produce a whole lot of lawn with a whole lot of mowing and probably herbicides or pesticides and, uh. Not doing a lot for the environment and, um, not much of a area really for the employees to go picnicking. Either it's just, employees are not known for their frequent picnicking on corporate lawns. So I thought those were some possibilities for goals. Um, we also have to focus and not try to do everything in one year. But I would like to go back to, um, uh, having gone over the zoning bylaw for. Things that are problematical and pick out some number of corrections that. We thought would be manageable, not all the corrections, but at least something that would be, uh, particularly useful. To try to discuss. It would be a little bit more complicated because we've done the, the super easy stuff. But there's still a lot of corrections that are really quite straightforward. Clearly, so one thing was meant and another thing was written and, uh, we only have to get the planning board to. Look at it long enough to say, oh, yes, that really is what we meant. And then get town council to work through the process. So, uh, I think. That was it unless in my email to Elizabeth, there was anything else. Uh, that counts as a goal. Oh, M C I conquered. Uh, it may be too soon, but we're going to need to rezone it. And I don't know if we wanna put it on our goals list or not even. Not yet. Too soon.
That is not your goal. Um, so there, um, and, um, are, are. Um, can I call you chair of the select board yet? Ms. Hartman?
Are you looking at me, Elizabeth?
Yes.
It's not official, but, um, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, unless there's a coup, right?
Unless, unless I screw up between now and Monday, right?
Um, but no, there, there is going to be, um, a, uh, M C I conquered, um, study group. Uh, being formed by the select board, um, and they will move forward in, um, that, that's. That is something that, that, that committee will put forth. Um, you know, through the select board as their, you know, charge as far as, um, but. You're, you're a couple of years away from that. So I don't, I don't see that one, but, um, to, uh, a couple, um. Just observations, um, I think the, the. Two-family in Residence C by special permit is probably more important. Um, you know, given that they are smaller lots, they're closer together, it does allow, um, public input. You know, a, a two-family in the Residence Double A District. Um, it, they're, you know. Less impacts to a butters, less, you know, impacted traffic and, you know, so. So that would be, you know, I, I would, you're, and by right as I'm, as I'm talking about, um. And for, um. Two-family by right in the MBTA, uh, zoning district. The, the Sudbury Thoreau, so District Three. Um, most of those are already two-family, other than the, um. Thoreau Gardens, which is, you know, already multifamily, but, you know. The other residential units, most of those are already two-family, so. I don't see a lot of, you know, bang for the buck with that one, but, um. You know, whether the board does want to try and, you know, think about, um, two-family by special permit in Residence. You know, A or Double A. Generally, um, you know, if the, as Andrew said at town meeting, you know, you, you pass something new. You give it a couple of years. See how things happen. Then you, you know, so you, you take this, you know, incremental approach. So I'm, I'm not sure that, you know, the town would be ready. Um. Per, you know, a year from now to expand that, but, um. That's just my observation.
Yeah, especially where I did say we were gonna move slowly. Opening it up the next year doesn't feel like it was the most. I, I don't think that would be well received, is, is what I would say. That the first question's gonna be, okay, well, how many people apply? Well, what do you mean you're going like all in on this again? Um, that, that would be from standing in the front of the room, that would be my impression.
Well, we don't, you know, we do have a lot of things on our plate for this year, coming year anyway. But I thought it was good to, um, get things out there so that we can look at everything together and, um. Have a considered idea about which particular goals to pursue and when.
No, it's definitely the last question.
Andrew, Andrew, can I, can I make some comments about your, while you're talking about your goals for the coming year?
All right ahead.
Thank you, um. I just wanted to let the planning board know about what some of the goals are for the select board in the coming year and how. These goals might, um, align with those so that if you're prioritizing some of the things that you're considering. That might come into play. And one of our goals will be to, um, increase revenue from sources other than property tax, which. Includes among many things, includes ensuring the vibrancy of our business districts. Um, we've got some turnover happening in our business districts. That's, uh, concerning and we wanna make sure that it's easier. For people to, um, do business, set up shop in, in Concord. And one of the things we're hearing over and over again is parking. So I'm, I'm. I guess what I'm saying is, um, I'm hoping that you, uh, accomplish something around parking, especially in the business districts. So that we ensure that our villages stay vibrant, we don't have empty storefronts. And we can meet some of the goals that the. We don't have empty storefronts and we can meet some of the goals that the Select Board has around um, revenue generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before I open it up more generally, did any other board members have any comments or concerns, thoughts? If not, I see you had a question from Carol Savoy.
Yeah, hi, this is um, Carol Savoy, sixty-one Bellknap Street. Um, I wanted to make two comments. Um, I agree with what Mary was saying about the additional revenue. Other than property taxes and making uh, parking easier to support the businesses. Um, you know, we're, and I know you're looking at parking and, you know, there's an issue on Middle Street and Academy Lane every single week. They call the police department and people are parked on both sides of the street. People can't get out of their driveways, you know, fire and police can't get down the street. We had a fire on Thoreau Street today and it's very concerning. So when you're looking at parking and you're trying to reduce the parking spots in the Thoreau District. Um, you know, it's, it's pretty vibrant to begin with right now and there, there is a parking issue. Um, particularly since Concord Academy has less parking, Main Street's full with parking now too. So parking is a big, big hot button issue for this neighborhood. Um, so please, you know, take that into consideration when you look at your, you know, restructuring the parking minimums. Um, the other piece of the combined business, we just, you know, approve the MBTA one thousand ninety-four. New housing units. There's two fortyBs which are, you know, four hundred and plus units coming online. And then we have the MCI, you know, prison property, you know, which people want to develop. So I think, you know, coming back to the combined business residence, you know, changing that zoning. To me, that, that's not an incremental approach. That's kind of like a big bang approach. We've already, you know, we need to absorb what we just approved, right? And I think you need to, you know, put that on the back burner for a few years. And let's see how, you know, this MBTA plays out, the two fortyBs play out and the prison plays out. Because um, you know, right now, you know, they just, you know, gave us the prison or, you know, closed the prison. I don't know, a year ago or whatever, but, you know, there's a lot of people very interested in that property. And I think, you know, things may move faster than you think there. And in town meeting, it seemed like there was a lot of interest for people about what's gonna happen, what should they do about it? And I think you need to get ahead of that and not say it's not gonna happen for two to three years. Because, you know, we were told at town meeting that, you know, if we play nice and um, you know, approve the MBTA. The state will be, look at us more favorably in regards to the prison. So um, you know, I think you should maybe just put the combined business on the back burner. And, you know, look at the other things, cause that's enough on your plate already. And I don't think the town is ready to move that quickly after all the housing that's coming online right now.
Thank you. Um, with regard to the prison closing, there is a, there is a site on the town's website. Which provides plenty of information about um, the current status of that well set. I don't know if anyone had any follow-up questions from what we discussed here related to um. Uh, upcoming items or, or um, goals for next year. But I think this is a pretty solid list that we can define a little bit um, as we go forward. So.
So I will, um, for these items, I will um, expand out. You know, based on this conversation, expand these out so that the board has a little bit better understanding. Then you can decide whether you want to keep um, things in or um, delete them.
And I, I did have one question about industrial zoning and this is a very silly question, could be a little touched upon it. The town has five separate zone types for industrial. Is there a reason for that or a distinction or is that good, bad, or something that?
Evolved?
Should evolve?
Um, I.
Is streamlined? I don't know. It's, it's really, it really is a question. Um, has there been any discussion about someone would like to open a business, but they can't in this zoning district? If they were in that zoning district, I just, I, I really haven't gone that deep into acceptable uses and just. It, it's, it seems like because there's, you know, every tiny spot was zoned slightly differently to, I guess, observe what was there. And not let new things in. It just, I don't know if it evolves, if it's evolving in an appropriate way. That's a question.
Um, so uh, agreed. Um, and that is, you know, something that can be, it added to the list. It may, you know, it may not um. Be something that can, you know, for twenty twenty-five annual town meeting. Um, could, but at least the board could start just that, that analysis of. Um, you know, here's, here's the, so I think there's resi- industrial A, B, one, two. Yes, so I think there are five different districts and they're all slightly different. And I think it was based on um, at that time, what was being, wanted to be built in that location. A new industrial zoning district got um, established to suit. That project at that time. Um, and as we know, you know, uh, there's, it, you know, it's, it's absolutely ridiculous. That Forest Ridge Road is owned in, you know, Industrial Park A. Um, you know, it, it's, it's just, it's, it's not gonna happen. Uh, you're not gonna get, you know. Thoreau Club is not gonna be sold and, you know, an industrial building built there. It's um, so that, you know, that, that is something that maybe, you know, maybe that does get. Um, you know, rezone to, to something else. But so the board could start a conversation of just like an, and, you know, comparison of the, you know, the five industrial zoning districts. Um, because, you know, so even if you take out Virginia, you know, out to Virginia Road. You have Middlesex Green, which, you know, there, you know, there is, you know, some office buildings. Um, some light, you know, research and development out there and, um, but. You know, maybe it's, you know, kind of as, you know, Mary pointed out. Um, it's, it's pretty limited. And, you know, you know, what would, what would be the problem with having more, you know, commercial business options out there? Um. You know, so that is something that the board could begin to evaluate.
Yeah, I think it could be good. Uh, I always bring up the examples, I mean, or what came up in the last year. Someone wants to open a brew pub and they can't. Well, that sounds like a really good industrial use that people could probably get behind, especially if there's a restaurant involved. So what? If zoning's an issue, it's something we should look at. That's how I would visit. You know, especially what we're talking, like very small areas here in town.
Okay.
Uh, so then the next item I have on the agenda is the Planning Board Liaison Points. Um, this is where people get. Um, you know, so for those of us who were part of these in the last couple of years. These are where planning board members are either designated or um, sit in on meetings that are happening in town and then can report back. Um, obviously, things are going to change a little bit and I think. Um, well, the best way, I guess, to, to start is um. I, I, I thought I would just jump into the, where it's probably appropriate as to, as the chair to take over the Select Board. As well as I can take the two-two-two-nine since no one seems to be on there anyway. And um, it's nearby and I get updates from that anyway, so I thought I would just jump on those two. Um, I, I will, um, it's probably good if people are willing to change up. Unless they really like them, that way we at least get a good sense of what's going on in town and, and if. Um. Like me, you were a little bit relentless in what we did in last year, it always gives you a fresh chance to, to jump back in if you would like, so.
But one of the challenges we do have is some of the meetings overlapping with ours.
I'm sorry, was that Rob?
I said some of the meetings do overlap from other committees with ours as well. It happened at the same time as ours. That's one of the challenges.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that was, that was a problem for Sue and uh, we worked on that one when we scheduled for um, this year to um, try and not have that happen. So um, we took, we took care of that one. Hanscom Field Advisory Committee, um, unfortunately, you know, that's. You know, that one's not set by us, so I know, you know, Mark misses the planning board every once in a while to attend that one. Um. And. Um, I'm not sure, you know, West Concord Advisory Committee usually doesn't collect. Not sure about Economic Vitality Committee. Um, and then the magic, um, I usually, you know, attend on behalf of um, the board. For that one, those are usually during the day as well.
Linda?
Um, can I jump in?
Of what?
Um, so I, I would be interested in the Economic Vitality Committee. Um, we, we no longer have a representative. I think they've changed their um, charter. But I would like to be a liaison there.
That sounds good. I don't know if anyone else feels passionate about any of the committees. I always thought CPC was fun just because you get to spend money, but it is, there are a number of meetings um, in the fall associated with it.
Well, I suspect I'd be interested in either climate action or transportation advisory. But I will take whichever position the planning board needs me to take. And, and if that means staying on the CPC, then I'll stay on the CPC.
Um, so. I, I agree with kind of switching things around, um, except for that one. Um, the, the, the CPC is, you know, it's a pretty intense committee. Um, and there is a, a huge learning curve.
So you think one should stay on for more than one year?
Um, I, I do.
Okay.
Um, you know, unless somebody else has a real burning desire to um, meet almost weekly in late fall. It, it, it is, it, it is a lot to learn.
It is.
Would you be willing to do it too then?
Oh, yes, I already said I would.
Oh, great.
Sorry, I guess I wasn't clear.
No, I just, I wanted to be, make sure you weren't, um.
No, it's okay.
So with Mark not being here, um, and then, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, hopeful the board will have a full complement. Uh, you know, soon, um, you, you can also just wait for Mark, cause he may want to. Um, with what's happening at Hanscom, he may want to keep, you know, plugged in with that one. Um.
Yeah, I, I would think, or there could be synergies with his, if he's doing the parking review, the transportation advisory could have a, a role in that as well. But I don't want to volunteer in anything, so. If, if nobody had.
No. But if Mark switches up, then I, I'll, I could take Hanscom if that's, if he switches up, let him make that choice. The, the challenge with the Transportation Advisory Committee is their meetings are at nine-thirty in the morning.
I can do that. If I'm on this committee.
Yep.
That, not sure I am yet, but.
Uh, no.
I worry, I can do a nine-thirty in the morning meeting.
It's a, it's a two-step process. Um, first.
Well, that's right, the board of selectmen have.
Has to nominate um, at one meeting and the, at the following meeting, you're appointed, so. Um, but I, I, I think hopefully we can get that, you know, you know, feed up for the next. I don't, it probably can't go on Monday's agenda, maybe it can, I don't, the new chair may have different rules, I don't know.
It's on the Monday agenda.
There you go, so you'll be.
Nominated.
Nominated on Monday and then.
Pointed on May twentieth.
Perfect, so Pat will be a member at the May twenty-first planning board meeting, so if she wants to take. Um, I, I think um, it may be, you know, it may be good since, uh, cause I imagine tack. Um, as the board moves forward with the parking, um, you know, the planning board may want to, you know, definitely get their input. So um, we can, we can field the rest of these. Um, you know, I don't know, Abby, if you're interested in either climate action or the housing groups.
Yeah, I mean, so climate does meet at the same time we meet. Is there a conflict with that occasionally?
Uh, that I.
So I was like, they have a meeting tonight at seven PM, it said, so.
So yeah, that may be.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I mean, I did the housing groups this year and I'm happy to do it again if that's helpful. Um, given kind of what's progressing, but either of those, you know, is, is fine.
Okay, um. Yeah, it's, it, and, and maybe the, the, I'm, you know, I just let the sustainability director know that, you know, there's, you know. Um, there, there isn't the opportunity to have a planning board liaison, you know, cause of the meeting conflicts. Um, and just ask if, you know, maybe he can just keep the board updated. Okay, um, well, then I will, well, um, for, um, for now, I think. Um, I think this is probably as far as we get until we, till we can have a chat with Mark.
With everything being recorded, at least it's easy to catch up with you.
Yeah.
So the next thing I have on the agenda is um, board signatory pages. So um, as allowed by the State Subdivision Control Law. The board is required to annual vote to authorize duly reported representatives to sign documents and plans on behalf of the board. And submit the vote and signatures to the Middlesex South Registry of Dute and the main court. So the vote would be um. Generally for the Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk and Town Planner to execute documents. And I couldn't read the actual vote if that would be helpful, I just don't know if there's any discussion or anyone cares, so. Okay, so I will just say that the um, the vote should be to um. Move to authorize the Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk and Town Planner to execute, certify and endorse. And endorse approval of plans presented to the board pursuant to Chapter Forty-One and related certifications, releases and other instruments. And any of said persons are authorized to act alone under this authority.
A second of motion.
That wasn't a motion. That was what the motion would be. I so move it and Linda seconds it.
Awesome, thank you very much.
All right.
And we'll do a roll call vote. Um, Window?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Sue?
Hi.
Abby?
Hi.
And I, Andrew, are you, yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you for parliamenting me. Um, so I guess we have, the next item is Planning Board um, Liaison and Town Planner Updates. So with the assignment of liaisons, I don't know if anyone has any final reports, but I do not.
Um, no, and so I can tell you as far as uh, um, and. Nope, and so I can tell you as far as an update. I will be talking with the board's consultant Emily, hopefully tomorrow. And, you know, the next steps for moving forward with the MBTA community site plan rules and regs. I can also let the board know that. With the town's consultant GPI on the Assabett River Bridge, we had the ten percent. Over the shoulder meeting with Mass DOT. Don't, don't ask me what over the shoulder means, it's a holdover from something and nobody could really explain it to me why they call it that, but. And it is basically that, that, that last meeting where. You know, everybody is, gets on the same page with the design moving forward to twenty-five percent design, which. In the engineering design phase process with Mass DOT. Twenty-five percent design is basically seventy-five percent of the work. So, once we get to twenty-five percent design, we can submit. For programming in the transportation improvement plan. For a specific year for construction funds. Once we get to twenty-five percent design, we will have a better understanding of what will be covered. With the transportation improvement program funds, the TIP funding, and what they. They will consider non-participating items, so there's. Questions have already been raised with. You know, the, the lighting, possibly what the team is, calls the veil, which is. The, the overhang projection that, you know, protects. People from the commuter rail, the train, and the noise and everything, we are, our team is going to kind of push back on that one. A little bit, especially based, you know, on the noise aspect of things, and also just from a. We're gonna push, you know, the safety perspective. And so, you know, hopefully we can, we can get that. Funded through the federal and state TIP funds, but then. There may be some improvements to the West Concord commuter rail parking lot, the redesign of that lot. May not be eligible for the federal fund, so we'll have a better understanding of. You know, what is and may not be covered, so that will be helpful. What else? And that's all I can think of right now about my notes, sorry.
Thank you, that's great. So I guess the last agenda item we have is a town meeting debrief. So. I guess we'll just open up the floor if anyone had any comments or thoughts, I thought Linda absolutely killed it, and the. The organization of those slides was one of the most impressive things I think I've ever seen, because the ability to call out each and every slide number. When someone asked a seemingly random question. Was the one thing that people had no idea how you managed to pull that off. Like people were complimenting me on how well organized you were, where if I get that kind of guy, I assume that everybody was floored as I was, so.
I was particularly struck by, please bring up slide seventy, where you were prepared for. Everything and you knew every number, wow.
Thank you, yeah, though. There are things I would do differently, but yes, yeah. But they're all, yeah, it was, it was a good meeting, it was a good meeting, I, I think. That. And, and it was because. There were so many people who helped. All across the town, from the select board to the housing groups to. You know, just the league, just so many. Representatives of Concord really was the, the way that it worked so well. So I, I think, I think we were just very fortunate, and, and I think we're seeing that around. With other towns as well, because now I, I know the numbers. Past forty communities that have passed their zoning plans, so I, I, I think that. Yeah, that there's a lot of interest in. In the MBTA communities is, is giving people all the opportunities that we thought at the outset. Were the reasons to support it. And again, we didn't push too hard. And I think the challenge will be to see how it works and then organically. Move forward with more. Multi-family housing, you know, that gives people more options in Concord, so it's, it's good, it's a good, good step, and. And I just think that the whole planning board and the planning division. And then, you know, you know, with a lot of support from the town manager and the select board. I, I think we all got it done, it's good, but I had the slides, you're right about that. And I hardly got to use them any, at all, the moderator was like, no more slides, let's take a vote. Which is good.
The one comment that I took away, you know, as far as preparing for next year is. One for every planning board handout, I will physically make the copies and carry them myself and put them on the table. I, I lost a couple of years on my life with that one. But the, the comment about with Andrew's presentation and the map and having a handout. And, and so in the future, if the board is doing a bylaw amendment where. The, there may not be a zoning map change, but if, if. A map is used in the presentation, just how difficult it is to see, you know, on those screens, so that was one, one takeaway that. You know, I, I remember.
And I will, I'll say. One thing that a couple people had mentioned to me, and this may be a function of that we were all. Trapped in a very Walden Woods-esque experience with no wifi and no cell phones. It's that the number of people who are like, you know, I was kind of like curious more about like the different zoning districts and like. You know, I read all the handouts like three times, because I didn't have anything else to do but sit there and read handouts, and so I think in some ways. It might be helpful. In future years to have like a, just a little like zoning overview in our handout of kind of like, you know, we have. Residents A and Residents B and Residents C, and like, these are how they're different, and, you know, it's, it's an. Not necessarily even specific to the articles, but it's a bit of an educational opportunity, people are like starved for information as they, as they sit through. Day one and day two and day three, so we may be able to give people like just a little zoning primer. That's kind of like as a general introduction, which may help give people some context, I don't see any harm in doing that if it's kind of.
Except for having to pay for printing.
A hundred percent, but if it's like two paragraphs, like I'm not saying like an eight-page, like this is how zoning works, but just like a little introduction of kind of like. This is, you know, this is what this is, and I think zoning is something that makes people either glaze over. Or they just have like a hu- a huge number of kind of preconceived notions about it, and I think we have a little. Little educational opportunity, I know people are sensitive to cost, but.
The map is the only hard part, it, it, because unless we manage somehow to reduce zoning districts, there are so many that to print it, you really need color, but yet text would be great.
Yeah, just, just to a, a little kind of explainer, I think could be helpful.
So I, I think that's, you know, definitely something that we can work on now is, you know, updating. You know, the, you know, there is a, there is a zoning bylaw page, but. It, it's, that it definitely needs work, because originally when we went to the new. Website format, the zoning page was handled through the building inspections division, because the building commissioner is actually the zoning enforcement officer. And. But the webpage itself, it, it, it needs help, and we have the, from the MBTA communities, we have. You know, the information from Lily, you know, the zoning, you know, one oh one, I think we can take that. And, you know, tweak it. And for town meeting, have a board, have the zoning map, have a QR code. Although, you know, based on, you know, your com- your comment, Abby, I'm not, I, I. Don't necessarily think it's a bad thing that the wifi wasn't there, and people did have to, you know, you had to read your stuff.
Oh, no, I think, I actually think it was, it was good, it was just like this missed opportunity of everyone's there, we've got like a captive audience for hours, and everyone did read everything.
But we can have a poster with a QR code. And that, you know, people can go to that page and get additional information, so. I definitely think that's something that, you know, Heather and I can, can work on, and, you know. As time permits.
Will the moderator let us put up a poster?
Yeah.
That would be great.
That's all I had.
Great. So our next meeting is in two weeks, right?
Yes.
Was it twenty-first?
Yes. In person, I don't know if you want to pull the board, make sure everybody's available. Or in person?
Yeah, I can.
I think so, I'm going back to New Jersey at an undisclosed date, and I won't know until I go. Well, I, I, I believe that, you know, the board was set with this alternating. You know, one virtual, one in person, which is, is, is helpful, you know, definitely for town staff as well. That's all I have.
Awesome, thank you all so much and.
You just have to adjourn the meeting, Andrew.
Do I have to move to adjourn it?
No, you can just, with no further business, you adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-five.
I'll, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.